Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Nonpartisan City Council Candidate Forum. All right, we have an engaging program tonight to allow these six candidates to share their views on topics important to the Culver City community. I'm Johnny Griffin, IT manager with Culver City's IT department and a member of the Finance Advisory Committee. However, tonight, I'm off the clock and here in my capacity as a student of the Leadership Culver City Program. We, your four moderators, you're four moderators, we're among the graduating students of this year's leadership program, and we'll be introducing ourselves as we go. Brief background, this nine-month immersion course has provided us with in-depth understanding of Culver City's governance, services, businesses, and the many challenges that we face in this city. Tonight's event is our final project. It's designed to encourage civic engagement, and we believe that voting is crucial because it shapes the future of our community. Now, our questions for the candidates stem from both our monthly leadership sessions as well as the Culver City Council's strategic goals that they identified for 2024 and '25. Now, due to time constraints, we may not cover every topic, but with everyone's cooperation here, we'll address as many of them as possible. The forum will run until approximately 8:00 PM, followed by a meet and greet with the candidates out here in the courtyard. Refreshments are sponsored by St. Joseph's Center. Big ups to St. Joseph's. Now, we'd like to acknowledge Jim Clark, our Leadership Program Director. There he is, there he is. Lastly, we couldn't have pulled this off without the help of our fellow leadership students. And so if I could have our supporting leadership students, please raise a hand. These folks have helped us tremendously. And we additionally have help from school students, very thankful for all the help that we've gotten. The folks here at the Elks Lodge have been just amazing. Without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Wyatt.
Hi there. Okay. Good evening, neighbors, how are you? Hi there. It is so good to see you. My name is Wyatt Gray. I live and work here in Culver City, and I am a member of the Landlord-Tenant Mediation Board with the city as well. I'm the rules guy, so I'm going to tell you all about the fund rules that we have created so that we can have a fair and a nonpartisan city council candidate forum. Each candidate is going to have two minutes to respond. And look, I bought a timer. And we will be marking that there. It's visible to the candidates. I think it's going to be visible to most of the audience here as well. We're going to be using a round robin style. So for question one, candidate one, two, three, four, and so on. Question two, two, three, four, five, six, back to one. We've asked the candidates to please focus on talking to you, the audience, to refrain from talking to each other directly as a debate, and we just ask you to be respectful, to listen intently. Please don't call out, please don't heckle. If you have something that you really agree with a candidate, feel free to let them know afterwards at the meet and greet. Or if you disagree, that is A-OK. Sound good? I mean, come on, does that sound good, Culver City? All right, so with that, let's keep that applause going. We're going to welcome our candidates up to the stage.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Valerie Johnson. Hey, guys, how y'all? So I work, I'm contracted with Culver City Hall. I'm actually with St. Joseph's Center. I run, help run the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. First question. Candidates, who are you and why are you running for Culver City Council?
Good evening, Culver City. My name is Yasmeen Omani-McMoran. I use she/her pronouns. I am the youngest currently serving council member, the only serving woman on the council right now. And I'm the first woman of color and the first black woman to serve as mayor of Culver City. I'm very proud of that privilege and this honor to serve you all for the past four years, incredibly proud of my intention to focus on equity and ensuring that our processes are open and available to everyone and really making sure that it's not just some, but for all. And there's a lot of work left to do. I'm very proud of the work that we've done around homelessness and our Project Home Key and mobility efforts and ensuring that we're working to close our portion of the Inglewood Oil Field. I'm very proud as mayor to serve on the Mayors for Pedestrian Safety, where I'm also a climate mayor, signed on to be a climate mayor, so I'm taking sustainability and safety and sustainability efforts incredibly seriously. And, you know, we're going to continue to move the city forward together. The beauty of Culver City and being in this position and making history, just, you know, there's more work to be done. And I'm incredibly proud and excited for what the future holds for all of us in this room and beyond. So looking forward and grateful for Leadership Culver City and all of the current class and all the leadership that allowed for us to be in this space. Grateful to the Elks Lodge for having us. Grateful to city, I see some city staff is also in the room. And so I'm looking forward to tonight's panel, and I'm very hopeful that we'll learn things about each other and have a pleasant evening together. So thank you again for this time and the opportunity. I'll pass it on.
Greetings, everyone. Thank you. Thank you, Leadership Culver City, for putting this all on. It's an amazing, you know, all the forums that I've done. I don't think that I've ever seen a turnout like this. So thank you all so very much. Thank you each and every one of you for coming out here and spending your evening with us. My name is Albert Vera. I'm a small business owner in the city of Culver City. I was formerly on the Landlord-Tenant Mediation Board, former Civil Service Commissioner, former mayor and current council member of Culver City. I'm running because I truly love this city. I love where we are right now. I realize that we've done a lot of work, but there's still a lot more work to be done. I was proud as mayor. I reached out to Mayor Bass. We locked arms. We moved forward into creating a state of emergency for the city of Culver City on homelessness, which enabled our city manager to act rapidly and quickly, creating some of the much-needed housing and services that we needed to get some of these unhoused folks off the street. I'm also glad that I was part of signing the ordinance to close down the Inglewood Oil Field. But more importantly, I'm running because I want to listen to the constituents. I want to listen to each and every one of you. I realize that there is no right and wrong, and for me, I sort of land in the middle of compromise. If there's something that comes before us that maybe I don't agree with, I offer and I encourage each and every one of you to change my mind. Bring me forward your ideas. Let me, let me see a different perspective, and I'm not unwilling to change my mind. I think that's all part of being humble and part of being a servant to the city is that we can pivot, we can formulate different ideas, we can compromise, we can change our minds. So I appreciate all your support. Thank you so very much for coming out here again in the Elks Lodge and Jim Clark for your outstanding leadership with Leadership Culver City. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Very grateful to see so many faces here. Thank you, family and friends, for coming to support me. My name is Nancy Barba. I use she/her pronouns. I am the daughter of immigrants, Mexican-American immigrants. I am the granddaughter of Brazeros. Brazeros were people came here seasonally to do everything from picking cotton to picking oranges. And I grew up in South Central Los Angeles. And the school that I was home to was so overcrowded that I was bussed out to the valley, to Sherman Oaks specifically. That commute was one hour each way every day. I have pretty bad asthma because of that, because they were, you know, diesel school buses. So it's no surprise with that, being a daughter of immigrants, daughter of a single mom of four, that worked really hard to get and take care of us, that I am a huge equity advocate. I am running because I think we can do better in the future. I think all of us can create and imagine and build together. I think it is, we are at this great opportunity where climate change, equity, and people are finding their voice. And we can build something really special. And Culver City is exactly the type of community that can lead in so many issues, from mobility, from housing, from homelessness, in care-centered planning and budgeting and land use. We have examples all around us. Inglewood Oil Field presented an amazing opportunity, and we led. And I believe we can do this together. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Denise Renteria, and I'm born and raised here in Culver City, and that is one of the biggest reasons that I'm running. I love my hometown, and I think it's really important to be engaged. And luckily, Culver City is an easy place to get involved and be engaged. I was appointed to the General Plan Advisory Committee. I'm currently on the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee. I'm vice president of the Culver City Historical Society. I am on the Sister City Committee Board as well. And I do all of these things because I give back to my city. My parents came here in the '60s and have made their lives here. So it's really important to me to make sure to give those opportunities back to other people that were given to my family. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Culver City. Thank you so much for joining us today. Thank you, Leadership Culver City, and thank you to the Elks Lodge for hosting. I'm, my name is Brian Fish, but everybody calls me Bubba, and I'm a transportation deputy for the County of Los Angeles. I'm a recent graduate of UCLA with my master's in public policy. I'm a community organizer, I'm an advocate, and I'm the only renter running in this race. And tonight, I'm really grateful to be able to ask for your support to become your next council member. I've been deeply engaged in advocacy and volunteer work since my husband and I moved here. I served as the vice chair of the Advisory Committee on Housing and Homelessness, and I helped cofound Culver City Pride Ride and Rally, which is this Saturday. So Happy Pride Month, hope to see y'all there. Now on to its fourth year. My husband and I immediately fell in love with the diverse community here and welcoming community. And, you know, we hope to be able to start a family one day and maybe own a home. But that dream is, you know, quickly slipping away for a lot of young people. It's becoming more and more difficult to imagine as housing costs continue to skyrocket across the city. We are at risk of losing our diversity, our young people, even our seniors, and that's why I'm running, to keep the diversity that makes Culver City so vibrant and make sure that no matter who you are, how much money you make, or how you get around, that you can thrive here. I've devoted my career to making sure people can get to where they need to go safely and efficiently. And I've fought tirelessly for climate change, housing for all, and a care-centered approach to public safety. I'm honored to have received the endorsement of local leaders and the Culver City Democratic Club, and I'm the only renter, running the only openly LGBTQ person running, and I'd be the youngest council member serving if elected. I would be honored to have your support in this election and to serve as your next council member, and I hope to earn your vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi. I'm Janine Wisniewski-Stalen, and you can tell it's pronounced exactly the way it's spelled. So thank you so much, Leadership Culver City, for this beautiful event. I've been a fan, Leadership Culver City fan, for many years, pre-COVID. And I thank you for Elks, thank you to Elks Lodge for hosting, and thank you to my family and my newest addition to the family coming up soon for being here. I really appreciate it. I am a community member. I moved into Culver City right before the birth of our first child, who's sitting here. And I moved here because I was attracted to our beautiful tree-lined streets and our great schools and our beautiful downtown and all the amenities that Culver City has to offer. And so what did I do as a mom of three, a full-time working mom of three? I jumped right in and I started volunteering, which so many of you did as well. I see all your faces, all these hard-working volunteers. So I volunteered in the school district. I volunteered at every single school site. I founded three organizations because I'm a community-centered collaborative worker. I founded an organization on improving our parks. I founded an organization on connecting parents through all our schools. I founded an organization on connecting neighbors. And that is one of the themes that I live my life on, one of the themes that I'm running on, is that Culver City is facing some really tough choices right now, but there is no reason why we have to choose between one thing or the other. We can do it all collaboratively and beautifully, just as beautiful as the city is. So thank you very much for having me, and I look forward to this very exciting conversation.
Thank you, candidates. So we received a lot of questions on the topic of Move Culver City, so we're going to get started with that. For context, the goal of this project, and I'm going to quote directly from MoveCulverCity.com, is envisions a reimagining of our streets as public spaces and prioritizes moving people more efficiently and safely in the design of the street. This effort converts a single-vehicle travel lane in each direction along existing streets into a mobility lane for buses, cyclists, and emergency vehicles only. One lane of car access would remain in both directions. Candidates, your question, what are your thoughts on the current state of Move Culver City? And if elected, would you advocate for any changes to the project?
Move Culver City has been a contentious subject for quite some time now. I believe that we need to reconfigure it. Council voted 3-2 to reconfigure it, not to completely gut it, but to reconfigure it. Seventy percent, over seventy percent of the respondents that took the survey said that we like certain aspects of it, but we think that it needs to be done better. We want our car lane back. We need, we need sort of a different approach. So what council came up with through our Public Works Director, which I think, by the way, initially the project should have went through Public Works in the first place, as opposed to going straight to Transportation Department. Went to Public Works Director, figured out what we can do to make it differently. We came up with having a combined bus-bike lane, which would make it a cohesive sort of system as opposed to fragmented as it is right now. And then we voted to expand it to Fairfax. So we have an additional, we bring back our car lane. We have converted or a combined bus-bike lane, and we expanded to Fairfax. So that's what we're pushing for. Unfortunately, it could have been done already, but a lawsuit had started. So right now, the city is in the process of litigating that lawsuit. Once we're done with it and hopefully become victorious, we'll start working on the project right away. Thank you very much.
The question about Move and what would I do differently? So if elected, I would do what they've, what they have overwhelmingly voted to do in our neighboring cities like LA, to do more of those projects. More of those projects because, is there a feedback? More of those projects because change is never easy. It has never been easy in our lives to change. Not in the whole history of humanity has change come easily. But climate change and traffic patterns are in a collusion course. Cars are a huge source of emissions. Our buildings are a huge source of emissions. And not everyone's going to get out of their car, and that's okay. That's okay. But we need to make it easier for people that do want to get out of their cars to move around the city via mass transit, via bike, via pedestrian ways. And we have to remember that Move Culver City was not just about a bike lane, not just about a bus lane, but it was very importantly about pedestrian safety because cars are the number-one killers of children in our area. So it is critical that we move to make our streets safer because it impacts all of us. We don't want grandma to be in danger when she tries to cross the street. We don't want great-grandma to be in danger. We want people to feel safe getting about our cities. And without that, we can't move forward. We can't move forward to get people more, those that are comfortable, to get out of their car. So we need to increase safety, and this is a huge part of it. So what would I do differently? I would make sure that every time we have an opportunity to do something more holistic, that we move forward and do it. Because Move Culver City, this part was the first of, they were going to do Sepulveda, they were going to do Jefferson, they were going to do much more.
I was excited originally about Move Culver City. I attended a lot of the meetings. I might get some flak for this, but I painted the streets. I was excited about this. I thought, we can try it, because that was the point of it. It's a pilot project. Let's try it. Let's see how it works. When you're doing a pilot project, you should have the opportunity for feedback and to change things if it's not working in a certain area. There were changes along the way because there were a few things that may have looked good in paper, but once you implemented it, it didn't work out. The current state is not really moving. I'm all for a protected bike lane. I feel very comfortable in a protected bike lane. I take the bus to downtown. I take the circulator. All of those things are great. But when I do take my car, it shouldn't take me 30 minutes to get from Vets Park to the farmer's market, and I go to the farmer's market often. I, I'm for the changes that could be done, and it would make sense. And what's really important is that survey. We should be listening to the residents. We should be listening to the small businesses that are directly impacted. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for the question. This is definitely an issue that I've heard about from so many people. I've been knocking on doors, and this is one of the first things people bring up. So I'm a transportation deputy for the County of Los Angeles. So thinking through how we can make our streets safer, because like Nancy alluded to, it is the number-one cause of premature death for kids in the county. And then also just thinking through affordability. The biggest indicator in Los Angeles County of whether someone's going to be, going to own a car is income. And it costs $12,000 a year for families to own a vehicle in California. And then thinking through climate, it's the number-one cause of greenhouse gas emissions, our passenger vehicles. So it's this three-headed monster, this trifecta, and also our traffic crises, right? We have people who are commuting from very far away, and the fact that we've engineered so much around cars makes housing costs, you know, go up. It's a really significant issue. For this project, you know, I also was really, really excited about it. But I continue to be excited about the promise of an expanded bicycle, pedestrian, and transit network in Culver City. This is a project that I live on, and I understand that folks have serious frustrations with it, too. I see folks biking on it that I've never seen bike before. I see folks on transit that I've never seen on transit before, and I hear legitimate concerns from people about, you know, I'm stuck in traffic, and it's really, really frustrating. And so I completely understand, and what I would, you know, what I would want to see is changes made because, as Denise said, it was a pilot project, so we do need to make changes. You know, the difference being, I don't believe those changes should be ripping out the very beginnings of a protected bicycle network that the city so desperately needs to protect people on our streets and make them safer for everyone. I want to see a lot of changes to it. It is a pilot. So I want to hear from you about what those changes might be. Thank you so much.
Hi, thank you for the question. This is also the first thing that people ask me, how I feel about this. And I too was very excited when Move Culver, I think I went, oh, it went out, but it came back. I was too, was very excited when Move Culver City was first implemented. I thought it was a cool idea to have bus, bike, and car lanes. But very quickly, you all remember, you woke up one morning and there it was. It was a pilot project. We have to remember, it was a pilot project, and the point of the pilot project is we were allowed to make changes when the public said it wasn't working. There was a survey. Seventy percent of citizens in Culver City said that they do not like Move the way it is. They want it changed, or they want it completely ripped out. I think that we should listen to people in Culver City. We should listen to businesses who are pleading with us to do something because people are not coming to frequent their establishments. We should listen to people who have some kind of disability, who cannot come to downtown Culver City because people cannot pull up and let them off. We should listen to moms who are having a very difficult time taking their kids from point A to point B because it takes too long to get through downtown. Takes too long to get them to go to school. We should listen to the workers who cannot get through or out of Culver City and make it on time to get to their jobs. And we have a lot of gig workers. You know, I spoke to an environmentalist at a Bayona Creek cleanup, and he said, I ride my bike, but you know what? I am also a gig worker in the creative industry, in the movie industry, and I cannot get through downtown, and that concerns me. I cannot live where I work because I work everywhere. And Culver City has maybe 14% to 16% of people in the creative industry, and those people are really important. They are our neighbors. Another thing is that Move Culver City, I am very disappointed that there is a lawsuit that has stopped the changes that this pilot project was intended to be. And I hope that's rectified very soon because we need to, we need to get back. And by the way, I am a fan of bike lanes. I do think we need to protect bikes and pedestrians.
I appreciate this question. I think Move was coming on the council in a pandemic, was one of the first sort of public in-person events that I went to as a council member. And I remember our then-Senator, now Congresswoman, our Assembly Member, and all five council members at that ribbon-cutting. And the joy and the families and the bike lanes and seeing the circulator, the, I think it was the first of its kind of that short-term sort of electric short bus. And to see the results come back from Move in terms of increased bus ridership, increased bike ridership and pedestrian usage along the corridor, as well as reduced, you know, violence along the corridor in terms of traffic violence. I'm really encouraged by that. I can also hear and appreciate the fact that for a majority of probably folks in this room, your primary mode of transportation is cars. And I appreciate your frustration with the shift from going from two lanes to one. I do believe, you know, I did list earlier, you know, I'm a climate mayor and a mayor dedicated to pedestrian safety. And there are some shifts that we're going to have to make if we're serious about the climate goals that we say that we have as a city. And it requires us, equity does require us to prioritize and make some shifts. And it does require us all to kind of, as Mayor Bass says, to lock arms with one another. We've all done that around homelessness, and we're still waiting to see if we're going to be able to do that around some of our climate goals. I know that it is frustrating. I know that sitting, the data said it was about an extra two minutes. Some people experience different levels. But I'm asking for y'all to, to try to see a vision for your children and a future for your children that includes clean air and their ability to get around our community safely.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming, neighbors. I really appreciate you all being here. So the next, oh, my name is Marta Valdez, and I've been a resident here since 1976, went to the schools and everything. Also, I'm a Culver City Sister City Committee Board Member, and it's a great organization. So the question I have for the candidates is, what does public safety mean to you? And what role do you envision the police department should play in our city?
Thank you. Public safety means a lot of things to people. It means having a safe place to sleep at night. It means having safety from violence. It means knowing that your children are going to go to a school that is going to keep them educated, that is going to give them access to opportunity. It also means community. It means you know that your neighbors are watching out for you and that your kids can play outside. So public safety means a lot of things. And never has public safety had more of a conversation than in the last, very open conversation from the General Plan Advisory Committee and the discussions around reimagining public safety. There was overwhelming response from a lot of the community members that they saw public safety as being mental health care and unarmed response when people were having a mental health crisis. Having access to services. And there, there is a growing need for these types of public safety services, right? So public safety is a lot of things, and we have a large number of community members that are finding themselves unhoused. Why? Because for decades, our state, our nation really, has underbuilt housing, and we need to have resources that can make them safe, that can help them make them safe, right? Whether it's mental health services, whether it's social services, whether it's access to housing. And I think it's really critical that we see that as an element of public safety, the services that people need. Thank you.
Public safety means being comfortable where you are. And not only does that mean safety and being taken care of with our first responders, but it also means having safe sidewalks, making sure those are taken care of, making sure our street lights work so we're not walking around in the dark at night. I want to make sure all those things get taken care of for you. Public safety is also our first responders, and we need to make sure that the city is allocating the appropriate funds and needs that the city needs, that our first responders need, so that we're properly taken care of. We have a very quick response time, and that's something we should be very proud of. A lot of other cities can't boast that. Not everybody always responds, and that's something that's very important to me, making sure our city responds to our constituents. So the police play a big role. The fire department plays a big role. So the police play a big role. The fire department plays a big role. And with the mental health concerns, now we have the mobile crisis team. Those are all very important things to have and keep in our city to make sure we're all taken care of and comfortable. Thank you.
You know, depending on who I'm talking to, people feel safe in different ways, right? And specifically when it comes to the police department, people have very, very different views of what makes them feel safe and whether that department makes them feel safe. But I have noticed a lot of really common themes and some of the candidates already touched on them. Being housed always feels more safe than being unhoused. Having transportation of vital services always feels safer than not having those, having access to open space, having lighting when you're walking to and from the senior center at night or to the grocery store at night, having proper lighting. Having eyes on the street when you're walking home alone or when you're going back to your car to catch the bus. There are universal things that make us all feel safe. And I think the problem is we have underfunded for decades those things. We've underfunded our, our transportation systems. We've underfunded our housing systems for those who are on the streets that were going out and were seeing folks who are suffering and who are in poverty. You know, I was, I was disappointed when we had this public safety element that created this holistic and future, you know, future focused vision of public safety. And it had 2,000, you know, people commenting on it and it was essentially thrown out. And I really wish that we would have continued to move forward on that. And I hope that if I'm able to, to earn your vote, that we would be able to take some of the, the ideas from that really thorough document and start applying them. You know, we can, we can look at other cities that are doing really incredible things. West Hollywood has an ambassador program, for example, just eyes on the street that can report and can help, you know, can help you if you're feeling unsafe and can call for backup if needed. Santa Monica has something similar. We also have now, thanks to the, the council, a mobile crisis unit that is really transformative. And I'm hoping to be able to fund that 24/7 as well. Thank you.
To me, public safety is holistic. It means that first and foremost, every single person has the right to feel safe and the opportunity to have a beautiful, thriving, family filled, friends filled, long life. And so that's where I come from when I think of public safety. It actually is, I was looking at the questionnaires because we got these questions ahead of time. Your entire questionnaire covers public safety. You, we talk about mobility and transportation, being, having the right to or being safe on transportation. Walking to and from schools, how important it is that kids are safe going to school and actually are safe in school. And I actually organized a public safety panel on public safety in schools and around gun violence several years ago, because this is something on the top of people's minds. Mental health, having mental health support and also breaking barriers to the stigma of asking for mental health support is part of public safety. And increased community engagement. People in our community should feel safe to engage and have frank, honest and involve conversation with what's important to them. We need to feel safe having these conversations. So those are the things I think about when I think about public safety. I also think about how important it is that we have a thriving and supportive first responders. We know that we make a phone call, our fire department will come within two minutes and our police department will come in under two minutes, too. And as a victim of a crime, I am extremely thankful that they were able to do that. So we think, I think that public safety also involves giving our first responders the tools that they need to be able to respond to us when we need help. Thank you.
So I was elected in 2020. I don't know if y'all remember back that long ago. We were in the middle of a societal racial reckoning. There were some things going on that were in the front of the news cycle. I don't know if you've noticed recently, maybe not so at the forefront of the news cycle any longer. But 2023 was the deadliest year for police violence in the United States. A lot of folks don't know that. And I think that's important to lift up because even if we're not, even if it's not at CNN and it's not at NPR, all communities are not experiencing everything the same way. So I feel like a part of my role and my very apparent difference is to bring those lived experiences up to the forefront so that we can build more awareness and more response to how folks are experiencing things that are happening in our community. I think that's important. And I think that we as policymakers have a responsibility to respond to, you know, things that are coming up that might not be so great. Another fact that we know is that there's a lot of overlap between mental health and police deaths. And unfortunately, a lot of folks that are in mental health crises are more likely to die from police violence than not, which is why I'm incredibly proud that we have a mobile crisis team. Unfortunately, we only have that team Monday through Friday from 10 to 6. I don't know about y'all, but my crises are not scheduled from that window. So it'd be really great if we were able to expand that. And that's an example of a budget priority. So every decision, every camp, every pothole, every replacement of a tree has a dollar amount associated with it. And we make choices every day about what gets funded and what doesn't. So I'm very invested in safety for everyone. Thank you.
Public safety means so much to each and every one of us, something different, but public safety starts from the moment you walk out your door. Make sure that your street lights are on, that your trees are trimmed, that your garbage is picked up. It's an array of, of things that matter. So I, I think, you know, from, from the top, top to bottom, everything about public safety, I think is in our open spaces. But particularly to the question that says, what role should the police department play? I think, you know, under the roles and under the leadership of Chief Sims, we need to be mindful and be respectful of his assessment of what keeps our city safe. We, we hired these professionals to do a job. We should let them do their job. For the most part, when somebody has a problem in, in the community, first thing they do is pick up the phone and, and call the police. For years, the police have been over tasked with things that really, maybe they shouldn't be. And that's why we created Mobile Crisis Team. Urban Alchemy is our service provider, which are providing services 24/7. You know, I heard here that folks want a safe place to sleep. That's what we did when we got our unhoused individuals off the street, gave them a safe place to sleep with wraparound services. It is all part of public safety and the services. We need to keep our response time where it's at. We need to make sure that we have adequate staffing so we don't deal with burnout. And that goes for the fire department, too. You know, the fire department sometimes is never mentioned in this, but we play a huge part of public safety and the response time to save lives on, on both ends. You know, our, I think all too often our police are vilified for whatever reason. I think, you know, for the first time in history, I, I see that we're losing young tenured officers to other agencies because of morale. If we, if we continue down that path, we're going to be really in dire straits in Culver City. We need to make sure our morale is there. We need to make sure that they have the equipment to do the job and to do it well, and also make sure that they're transparent, that they're, they are responsive to the city council.
Thank you, Albert.
Thank you very much.
Now we're going to move into financial stability. What are your thoughts on ensuring long-term financial stability for our city? And what financial challenges do you see on the road ahead for Culver City?
For the last question, one of the things that is going to be a financial challenge is to make sure we have the appropriate funds to keep helping our unhoused that are here in the city. We have the hotels and we have the safe sleep site and it costs a lot to keep those running. I want to ask for, when elected, I want to ask for a bigger percentage of the Measure H money. We all voted to help the homeless. We are coming up with solutions to help the homeless. Help us help our homeless situation. I think that's really important. I know that there is a revenue stream that is trickling and as much as we want to do in the city, we need to make sure we're going in the right direction and not into any sort of financial deficit. I think it's important to come up with solutions that aren't constantly just taxing people. That seems to be our solution. It seems to have been our solution for a very long time and we need to stop doing that. There are other ways of funding things. There are other grants that we could be applying for to help with a lot of the things that we constantly do and our constant maintenance. But just taxing people cannot be the solution. Thank you.
You know, the city is facing an $18 million deficit in our general fund, which is a pretty significant portion of our $185 million general fund. And, you know, just some, some really quick basics about how, you know, we earn our money as a city. We're, we have a pretty low real estate tax basis compared to other cities like West Hollywood, Santa Monica. We get a lot of our revenues from sales tax, from, from, from business license taxes and from now from real estate transfer taxes. So thank goodness we passed, you know, Measure RE in 2020 and BL in 2022, or else we'd be in, you know, some more dire straits. But we do, I believe, you know, have to balance our budget and our, because our reserves will only last so long. And so we need to do that, in my view, without cutting vital services. And so, you know, there are, there are a whole host of, of strategies we can use in my role at the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, where I worked before I worked for the county. I was in government affairs, a position that a few council members have advocated for here in the city that I think would be a really great help to the city in not only securing grants, but securing funding opportunities from the state, from the federal level. You know, we have this investment, this Inflation Reduction Act that President Biden signed into law that has a ton of incentives for green infrastructure that are really important. Grants like the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Grant that helps us build affordable housing at virtually no cost to the city, as long as we pair that with sustainable transportation infrastructure, like protected cycle, you know, bicycle lanes and other things like that. We also need to make sure that we are, you know, preventing liabilities. We've had, you know, expensive lawsuits from things that I think we could avoid in the future if we follow state law and make sure we're covered our bases, covering our bases when it comes to things like public safety. So avoiding those lawsuits is important, too. Thank you so much.
I know one lawsuit we could have saved money on. Sorry, I couldn't, I, it was too, it was too open. Sorry. Financial stability, you know, I sit on the Cultural Affairs Commission for the city of Culver City. And it's a really beautiful commission because what we do is we connect the community through art. And art builds bridges to hearts and minds. And it's, it's, it's really important to me because we ask constantly for more programs, but the city doesn't always have the money at the year when we're doing the budgeting. And every year we ask for something that we want. And every year we're told, I don't know if we can do that. We do so far find the money because a lot of our public art is funded through programs, like when a builder builds a, a building or spends over a certain amount of money, that money goes into our public art program. So that is a really creative way to fund some things in our city that make it beautiful and livable. We also have a very thriving small business community and over 60% of our revenue in our city comes from small businesses, from the revenue that they generate. So something that we really need to focus on, and I know this is going to be another thing that we talk about, is making sure that our small business community is strong and thriving and that we attract more businesses to our city. And we have a, we're the heart of Screenland. We have a lot of entertainment companies here. But we need to start thinking about a variety of businesses so we don't end up in the same boat that some folks in the valley are, some cities in the valley, where they depended on one industry and now it's gone. Also, I sit on the Screen Actors Guild Government Relations Committee and we talk a lot about how we can creatively fund, because that's my union, how we can fund different programs that arts workers want. And I do believe that we should do a public-private partnership and ask for more grants and get them.
And in regards, I put out a, well, actually, let me just, no, we're not supposed to talk to one another, but I'm, I just want to lift up. I, I am concerned a little bit about the narrative that, you know, folks should not fight for what is just because in this country, and particularly the courts have been a way where folks have fought for justice against unjust laws. This is the anniversary this week, I think, of Roe v. Wade being struck down. So it's just, you know, I, I just get a little concerned about the narrative that people shouldn't fight for what they believe is right and for justice in the ways that they feel. So I hope we can all continue to respect one another as neighbors in that respect. Not too long ago, I put out a mayor's budget or a mayor's budget memo, sort of outlining some of my concerns with the budget, the 18, almost $18 million deficit that we're facing. And since I've been on the council and realized sort of how we fund is literally every department gets what they get last year and they get to ask for something new. It's just, it seemed like it's like, it's no basis about performance. There's no basis about, and so if y'all have been keeping up, I know budget meetings have been the least attended and the least commented on since I've been on the council, although in the past two years, there's been more and more engagement. So I'm grateful for that. But we have to look at how we do the budget. This year, for the first time, the vice mayor and I went up to Sacramento to advocate to our state representatives to fill some of the gaps around some of our climate projects and also some of our transit projects to try to get those funded at the state level. We have to continue to advocate for resources and, you know, every other month, the West Side mayors get together and we're the only West Side city with this type of deficit. So I'm looking at what they're doing in Santa Monica. I'm looking at what they're doing in West Hollywood. I think that, you know, and again, I don't know if y'all know about the mayors in those places. We have different views, but we're trying to get to a thriving region. So thank you.
So, you know, we're going to have to have some difficult conversations moving forward. Right now, our revenue looks good for at least four years, but past that, we're going to start really running into some issues. You know, I just want to, you know, lift up really quick our, our city manager. When he first came in the office, he had a, a reserve of $50 million. As of today, it's $150 million. So just in his time here, he's increased the revenue or the reserve by $100 million. And I say this because the budget lands in his lap. The departments submit their requests. He goes through them and, and I think every department that submitted a request this year, their request was granted. We hire people because we trust them. We trust their leadership. We trust their abilities. I think that's what we should continue to do. But what we also need to do is, you know, we talk about, we want more housing. We need grants for this and, and whatnot. That's great. But we have to understand that the more residents we have, the more services we're going to need. And that money, money comes from general funds, whether it's, you know, our sewers, our trash collection, our, our police department, our fire department. That's all general fund money that we, we need to figure out how we're going to get there. There's a new sort of Measure H 2.0 that's coming on the ballot, another quarter cent sales tax. We're at our cap right now. If that measure passes, there's some sort of finagling we can do with the budget and with that number in terms of our cap on sales tax. We can sort of fold that half a cent into our general funds or, and, and sort of be solvent. If that measure doesn't pass, then I think what we have to do is have a conversation with the community, maybe go to our legislation and ask them to raise the cap on sales tax. I know it's a difficult conversation, but we're, we're going to get to that point where we need the community's input on how we're going to for me, how we're going to solve this deficit. Thank you.
I love this question because I am very happy to have supported the ballot measures that have really helped the city get to that very healthy reserve. When I was in the Finance Advisory Committee, you know, seven to four years ago, we were facing this huge cliff. Thank you, thanks to measures and the political leadership of former Mayor Alex Fish and others on the council. There was two things that happened. One, the real estate transfer tax passed. That means you don't pay more taxes if you stay in your, in your property, whether it be commercial or, or residential. But as soon as you sell it, you pay a transfer tax. That has been in some years, a really big boon to the city. Second thing, upgrading the business license. The business license hadn't been updated in nearly 60 years, I believe, or many, many decades. So both of those I supported. One of them I actually supported and, and the argument. I was part of writing the argument and, and rebuttal. The reason that is important is we need to think of all the ways that we can raise funds. In my professional life, I do this for a living. I do this for counties, for cities, for state agencies. I help my clients apply to the Department of Energy, the Energy Commission, the Public Utilities Commission. Utilities Commission, and I've helped clients get over a billion dollars to do energy efficiency and decarbonization in our buildings. There is so many opportunities, but we need leadership and we need a political will to be knocking on our, our state and federal representatives and be saying, hey, we have this brilliant idea, what if we did an affordable housing project that was, um, you know, net zero?
Okay, so the next, the next question we have, what would you do to promote and sustain a healthy, small business community in Culver City?
Yeah, thank you for this question. I'm, uh, I'm a former recovering small business owner. I had a small commercial production boutique, uh, when I was living in Palms. And I used to, uh, go to the Small Business Development Center in Pasadena because it was so robust, they had so many great services that they offered there. They helped us get incorporated, helped us balance our budget, helped us, you know, create our, um, you know, P and L sheets, like, and, you know, do our taxes, everything. And, you know, I know Culver City has, um, our, our, you know, Culver City Business Research Center. I want to find ways to, to expand that, um, to increase, you know, the incentives for budding small businesses and entrepreneurs. There are some cities that do help entrepreneurs, whether it be with financial resources, even subsidies that help people start businesses here, and I would love to see if we could even, um, target those resources to underrepresented folks or folks who have barriers to starting businesses here, black folks, like, you know, Latino folks, um, indigenous, immigrant, queer business owners, people who have, you know, or low-income business owners, just folks who have, uh, you know, experienced traditional barriers. And, um, I want to also see if we can, you know, uh, expand our Culver City Sustainability Business Certification Program, because that's been, um, I think, a really great start for small businesses here, um, in terms of becoming sustainable. Uh, we have, you know, a plastics ban, single-use plastics ban, we have a ban on certain materials and things, but I would love to see if we could reward, like, really reward, um, our business community that chooses to go sustainably with, with, you know, subsidies, with real help, and I think that's all a part of our budget and, you know, it's all decisions that we, that we can make about how we spend our money. Um, and then, you know, finally, I, I want to help streamline of the approval process for Culver City businesses. I've talked to, I've talked to a few Culver City business owners who basically say it's really hard to get the approvals to open their business, some of them have to pay rent for several months on end, and I want to expand that department that helps, you know, those approval processes go quicker. Thank you.
I am currently a small business owner, and I am the daughter of small business owners, and I grew up, uh, I remember sitting at the kitchen table, helping my mom and dad put all their business cards into a computer so they could start their businesses. So I do know what it's like to start a business, to fight to keep the doors opened and to fight to make payroll. In my parents' business, there, I remember sometimes there were days that the business was thriving, but they may not have taken a paycheck. So when we look at small businesses, we walk downtown or we go to, uh, parts of Culver City that we don't talk about much often, the, the, the west side or farther in the east or up by, um, Slauson, we need to remember that each one of those businesses is owned by a human being fighting to make payroll and, uh, fighting to, uh, keep employees who need to put foods on their table and, you know, feed their kids and clothe their kids and help their families thrive. So, um, what I would do is remember first and foremost that sixty percent of our city revenue is small business, so we need to keep them and do whatever we can to keep them here in Culver City, um, and attract more businesses. Some ways we can do that, uh, Karen Bass, I, her name's been, been invoked a number of times here, I'm a big fan of Karen Bass, and her city, the City of LA, our neighbor, just opened a, um, a small business, um, um, project where she helps people who currently run small businesses, take classes to keep their businesses, people who need to want to start a small business, how they can start that business and how to make it thrive. Um, these are things that our city can do, or we can, uh, continue to lock arms with partners who are already doing it, because there are a lot of creative people in our city, a lot of creative people outside our city who would love to come in here and help us, because Culver City is the place to be.
One of my, um, I started out the year as mayor with, uh, three priorities, um, community investment, housing and homelessness, and investing and supporting our small business community. Uh, so our small business community is incredibly important, uh, our community thrives when our businesses thrive. Ironically, in Monday's meeting, I'm really grateful that, uh, and I think it was unanimous in terms of support, so I'm grateful for my colleagues' support as well, uh, but there will be a conversation about how we can better support our business community and chamber, uh, looking to potentially formalize more of our relationships. I think a lot of the relationships have been more informal. One of the requests that I also made earlier this year was to do more certificates for our ribbon cuttings and the new businesses that are coming to the community, asking for better coordination between, um, econ, economic development, which is, you know, they're staffing up, they have, uh, I think, two new staffs, are really grateful for the, uh, the additions to that team and the good that they're doing across our community. Uh, but we absolutely need to be ensuring that we are listening to our small business community and that they have a seat at our proverbial table, right? Um, one of the things that I'm also really proud to have done is mayors, every month since I've been mayor, I think since about the second quarter, I've partnered with the local small business to amplify their business, I call it moments with Mayor McMonan, and I've been able to just kind of like hear and connect with various, both small coffee shops, little businesses, because I think that's important. I want to be accessible to our neighbors, I want to make sure that folks are at the table, and if there are ways that the city can better support our chamber or just business community, whatever that may look like, um, that we are absolutely being responsive, and I am absolutely open to new ideas and how to do that, and I look forward to that conversation coming back before us at the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, well, I'm glad to hear that you're, you're supportive of the chamber. Um, I know in the past, that was sort of a contentious, um, item within the city, but it's glad, I'm glad to hear it. You know, we, we mentioned, I heard across the board here about listening to our business community, and that's true. As, as a small business owner, it's vital that we listen to our business community, especially of those business communities around, along the move corridor. When these businesses say that they're suffering because of the reconfiguration, um, our duty is to listen to them, not boycott them. Um, and, and I think moving forward, that's what we really need to do, we need to listen to our business community, we need to involve them in the conversation and listen to what they really need and listen to some of the priorities that are out there and some of the regulations that are coming forward and how that affects these businesses. Um, you know, what I'd like to do is streamline the approval process. Um, I was talking to a business owner who's trying to open up his restaurant, and it's not a city holdup, but it's with the health department, um, how the city can create maybe, maybe a more, um, direct line or, um, a contact with the health department to help these permit processes, um, be streamlined and, and move them forward, and also retention, really less supporting our local businesses. It's all about shop local, so I encourage each and every one of you, uh, to shop local, support our businesses, and also we have some great, you know, organizations, the Downtown Business Association, let's strengthen that, that leadership, that commitment that we have, that relationship, and really speak with them, and then some of our larger businesses, also larger corporations, how they can support our local businesses. So there's, I think, a, a, a huge amount of, of items that we can do, but it's all about listening to our business community. Thank you.
I had the, uh, privilege of chatting with some of the staff members under Economic Development, and I think also listening to staff that's working with small businesses, they have wonderful ideas. I think of the great event that is, um, the Lemonade Summer Thing that the Downtown, um, Business, uh, Community puts together. I think there's a lot of opportunity to make, help businesses build more customers and also build community. Um, you, you've seen that, I've seen that happen in Santa Monica with their, like, shop local movement, where they'll move, like, an event, right, and really bring a lot of new people from all over the city to one little area in the city. I think it's, um, we used to see this with the art show in the Helms area, right, that was not just, um, certain art galleries would be open, people would go out to dinner afterwards. So I think there's a lot that the city can do. Totally agree with other, um, candidates that are saying streamlining, I think streamlining all things in the city would be helpful, um, whether it's the city or city working with public health, yes, that is critical, because we do, we've all seen it, where restaurants are trying to open and they, they, takes a year. I, I don't know what the holdup is, but surely maybe there's something that the, uh, city can do for that. I think we need to really encourage our community to support local businesses and doing that through announcing, highlighting new businesses. Hey, welcome our neighbor down here, right? The, the city has a big opportunity to amplify and support local businesses, and I think we can do that.
I grew up here. Every business in Culver City was a small business at one point in time. I grew up going to the Culver City Stationery Store at the Culver Center, I went to Backstop Pizza. All of these places were just our core businesses. For the longest time, we didn't have any, um, commercial, like, big-name stores. Everything here was a mom-and-pop-owned store for the longest time. It's important to make sure we can keep small businesses here in the city. Talking about the Resource Center, as a kid, I filled out my parents' business license. I still fill out my parents' business license. But when I was there at City Hall at twelve years old, I asked for help and there was no one there to help me, and there was no one there to help my parents, who predominantly speak Spanish. So things like that, having a resource center where you can sit down and get the help that you need with these things, especially for people that speak other languages, is so important to me. We need to make sure that those departments are adequately staffed so we can help. I also think we need to support our small businesses, and what I mean is we all in this room need to continue supporting those small businesses. When, when the restaurants started opening up in downtown, my family and I made a conscious effort to go to a different restaurant that was open every week, because we wanted to make sure that after their struggle of being closed, that they were still there the following year. I visited more small stores and small boutiques after that, and it was important for me because that's how you make your city work. I'm putting my dollars back in Culver City, I'm not going that far for anything because I don't need to, because everything is here. Thank you.
According to U.S. Census data, of the seventeen thousand six hundred ninety-one households that make up Culver City residents, approximately forty-six percent rent their homes. On the ballot in November, Californians will be asked to vote on a statewide measure to repeal the Costa-Hawkins Rental Housing Act of nineteen ninety-five, which, if repealed, would prohibit the state from placing limitations on the right of any city or county to enact or expand residential rent control. The question is, what are your thoughts on the current state of rent control in Culver City? And if this act is repealed and your total authority is placed back in the hands of city government, do you foresee the need for any changes to rent control within the city limits?
Um, it, I don't know if everyone knows what Costa-Hawkins is, but basically, it's a law that says that, um, if, uh, it was, it was an answer to, uh, rent control in different cities. The state stepped in in nineteen ninety-five and said, um, that landlords, uh, if it, if it, if they had, let's say, a long-term tenant who lived somewhere twenty years and the rent price was, let's say, six hundred dollars a month, if that tenant moved out, the landlord could then raise the rent to whatever market rate is. So that's Costa-Hawkins. So it's a state law. Uh, I, I love local control for so many things, and I, I am a proponent of rent control and tenant protections, but I'm also a proponent of understanding that we have a lot of landlord-occupied small-business apartment owners here in Culver City. And so I think that we should support our tenants, protect our tenants, but I also think that Culver City should most definitely think about the small, uh, business apartment owners and think about, um, how they can continue to maintain their, um, their buildings, because what I don't want to see happen is the destruction of naturally occurring affordable housing, which is something that I'm very, uh, very, try to be very clear about. We need more affordable housing here in Culver City, everywhere, actually. I've talked to people in South Carolina and say, you know, we have that same issue here in South Carolina. But one of the, if you, if you go up Overland and you see those big apartment buildings, every single one of those big apartment buildings, which are not affordable, are there because a naturally occurring, small, for lack of a better term, mom-and-pop apartment building was destroyed. It, uh, displaced the current residents, the residents who live there, some people who were trying to age in place, and I don't think we should let that happen in Culver City.
I think when we talk about housing and rent control, um, what we're really talking about is families. I'm right now. What we're really talking about is families and their ability to be a part of our community and remain. We already see in the, uh, census data that we're losing, uh, diversity in Culver City. I don't know if folks have been keeping an eye on that. Um, and what rent control, and, and when I decided to run, I was a renter at the time, and I was experiencing, very quickly after announcing, uh, I was experiencing my own housing insecurity because my landlady unfortunately passed away, and I wasn't certain if I would be able to afford to continue to live, uh, in Culver City with my daughter, I'm a single mom. Um, so we absolutely need, uh, rent control. I mean, with our, I own a condo in Fox Hills now, I know what my expenses are gonna be every month, give or take. Uh, renters don't always have that same level of stability for family, we know about fifty percent or a little under of our neighbors here in Culver Center, City are renters, and they deserve the ability to plan and have stability in their budgets as well. Um, so we need rent control, we need tenant protections, we need to also support the production of housing. We know for a long time, the data shows that our housing production was pretty flat as a result of a lot of policy that didn't allow for housing to be built, or certain types of housing that would allow for more neighbors and families to be a part of our community, and those are all policy choices. So we kind of have to decide, um, you know, we do celebrate diversity here, we say we love the diversity that is occurring, but we also see that data reflecting the costs are going up and up, and then communities that may not be able to afford that, you know, going down, and I think we also see it in our school district, where a lot of the kids happen to permanent, so that we can still have a school district with families, because families can't afford it. So, thank you.
You know, it's, it's about balance, um, it truly is. You know, we, we talk about supporting small businesses, we look at it, our, our, most of our rentals here in the car, in the city are, um, mom-and-pop landlords, small businesses. Um, and if we don't support them, then we're gonna, really, really, we, we come across a lot of unintended consequences. Um, for, for the most part, I think there's this misnomer out there that because you own a piece of property, that somehow you're sleeping on mattresses full of cash and you can just, you know, unending stream, it's, it's not like that in reality, that the, the cost of, of operating and maintaining a property for especially small business owners, uh, i- it's costly, um, it is, it's about balance, it's about really, we do definitely need tenant protection, um, rent controls, um, is absolutely a must. Uh, the state had a, a mandate or a, um, a level set, Culver City went above and beyond that. Um, I, I think, you know, we need to be, um, mindful, we need to know that there's a lot of, um, housing coming online, but what price point is that gonna be with Costa-Hawkins? It is about housing, but we need to be mindful in terms of how much we charge and supporting our small business, um, owners. Tenant protection, a must, rent control, absolutely, um, but it's about balance, about really bringing both sides to the table and figuring out what's worked, but listening to our mom-and-pop renters as well and seeing what kind of struggles they're going through. Thank you.
I would look forward to the repeal. So let me tell you what currently prevents us from protecting, it prevents us from protecting families, single-parent households, that may be renting a single-family home, that won't be able to stay in our community. It prevents us from applying rent control and tenant protections to people that live in condos and townhomes. I've said this before, I am a mom-and-pop landlord, which is kind of funny, um, I don't think of myself as a mom, uh, but it's, it's part of being a responsible landlord. We have to be good agents in the community, and I think protecting tenants is essential. Until the twelve years ago, when we moved to Culver City, I had been a renter my entire life, my entire life, um, uh, no one in my family had ever owned property. So I think it is just to support renters, to stay in our community, we are losing diversity. Look at the census data from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, which informed the, um, housing element, um, uh, existing conditions, there was, used to be twenty-two percent people that, twenty-two percent of the community identified as Hispanic. percent people that twenty-two percent of the community identified as Hispanic. Currently, it's eighteen. African-American, down a few percentages. The median income in our community is going up, 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 up. Where do we want to live? What kind of community do we want to create for our children and grandchildren? Because I don't know about you guys, but I don't see want to set up my daughter that unless she's a millionaire, she will never live anywhere near me. I want to create that kind of environment that people can stay near their local family and community.
I think it's important to keep local control here in the city. I also think it's good to create a balance between landlords and renters. It can't just be all one side. Our affordable housing here in the city is the mom-and-pop landlords, and we need to find ways to support those landlords and make sure that they are running a sustainable business. That also ties into making sure that the renters get assistance. We have rental assistance programs here in the city. We need to make sure those are advertised so that people who are struggling or on the cusp of leaving or losing their home don't. It's making sure I manage my parents', um mom-and-pop, they're landlords, and I manage their small business. It's important to keep people housed, and it's important to make sure those opportunities of living in Culver City and going to Culver City schools remain. I don't think everyone wants this tax hike that would come along with this. So I think it's important to keep our local control and to be able to find balances and really respond to the community and get feedback from landlords and from renters. Thank you.
You know, I mentioned I'm a lifelong renter. My husband and I have been lifelong renters, and um we don't really see a necessarily immediate future where we're gonna be able to buy a home. And um you know, we we understand when the rent check or the rent bill comes every every year, the rent increases come every year, and we have to wonder, oh, is this, you know, is this gonna work for us or not? Um rent control is the most immediate way that we can prevent folks from falling into homelessness. It is our most immediate and accessible tool to stop the flow into homelessness, and that's why it's so important, particularly in a time when the housing market is so imbalanced in terms of renters having so much uh so much less market power, right? Um the rent has gone up. When we first moved into Culver City, it was three thousand dollars for our apartment, and that was considered super expensive, right? Now the median rent, the median rent in Culver City is three hundred dollars more than that for for what's on the market right now. So we've seen rents explode here in the city, and we've seen homelessness go up. And we know homelessness is what the primary driver of homelessness in a given city is rents compared to median incomes. So as rents go up, but but incomes don't, we see people fall into homelessness. And that's the stakes here with rent control. So when we talk about Costa Hawkins, um you know, it fixed rent control at nineteen ninety-five. All buildings built after nineteen ninety-five cannot be rent controlled, all single-family homes, all townhomes, condos. So for me, I think a rolling rent control makes a lot of sense, um making sure we can protect tenants that are that are in a, you know, in a building that is a certain uh a certain age. I think that that's what cities across the the region are doing, um or or at least across the country are doing that don't have Costa Hawkins. And we also need to find other ways to make sure that we keep our tenants uh protected, um because it's vital for the diversity of our city.
For our group of four students, this represents maybe a third of uh what we were hoping to cover, but we knew it would be a challenge. Uh Culver City is faced with uh a a lot of significant challenges. Uh we've heard a lot of great answers. So uh we have time for one last question, and this will be maybe a combination of your closing statement, but we also wanted to bring it around uh and make it a fun question. In our leadership Culver City, one of our sessions, uh we were asked this question that I'm gonna ask of of each of you. What does leadership mean to you? And please share a leader, living or dead, that you look up to and why?
Thank you so much for y'all fought through tech difficulties and um our engaging neighbors, and I've really enjoyed to spend time with both my fellow candidates and all of you this evening. Thank you again for the hard work it took to bring this to all of us, and I hope it was worthwhile for you all as well. Um in terms, I work at Children's Defense Fund in my day job. Fun fact, these are not full-time jobs. Uh so I work as a Director of Education Equity, uh went to Spelman College for undergrad, and my Spelman sister, Marion Wright Edelman, the first uh black woman to be admitted as an attorney in the state of Mississippi, founded Children's Defense Fund over fifty years ago. And CDF is, you know, dedicated to ensure that our children, our babies, our most vulnerable, have the tools that they need, primarily focusing on literacy, which we know is such a crisis unfortunately in twenty twenty-four. Um but I deeply admire her courage and what it took to be the first. Um and to be, you know, and to create an organization that has endured and has five state offices as well as a hub in DC. And I think about um my experience, not to not to compare myself to Marion Wright Edelman, but um it is a little historic to be a first in Culver City and what that means and how polarizing just my existence and perspective as I bring up. And even in this space, you know, it it's disconcerting for some folks because the things that I lift up is not always mainstream in our leadership spaces, unfortunately. Um I do try to meet all of our neighbors with respect. I'm very proud to fight for programs like Mobile Crisis. I'm I'm proud to fight for our um most vulnerable neighbors, our our renters. I'm proud to have started uh and co-founded Pride with Councilmember Puzza and Bubba Fish that's here on this panel with me. And I, you know, the equity, I mean, I could continue to run down a list of things, but we need each other, y'all, and we can do this work. It is possible. Thank you so much for this time and this opportunity.
To me, leadership is about collaboration. Um leadership is about focusing on vision and really inspiring others to bring their best forward and create sustainable and lasting change. Um I think, you know, through the city, um as as a council member, leadership is difficult. It's always um, you know, my dad has a thing, let me segue really quick. You know, at the end of the day, if you end up pissing off both sides, that means you're doing something right. And I think for the most part, a- as a council member, we've we've done a pretty good job at that. Um, um, you know, but that that's really what it's about. It's not about listening to one side or the other. It's about listening to both sides, bringing a little idea from one side, a little idea from the other side, and moving forward. Um at least we're moving forward. Um we can't argue, I'm right, I'm right, I'm right. And at the end of the day, nothing gets done. To me, that's leadership. It's about listening, about compromising, and about moving forward. Um slow as it might be, at least we're moving forward. I I think we all have the same vision for the city. We have different views on how to get there. Um it it's important to be mindful and respectful of each other's views, but let's move forward. Um my um role model, whether you hated him or or loved him, was my father. Um he um bled Culver City. He put so much of his life and his love into this city. Um if I could be just a fraction of what he has done for the city, I I will be a a wealthy man in terms of spiritually and in my mind. Um he um he taught me a lot, taught me what to do and what not to do. Sometimes I didn't listen to what not to do, but so so be it. Um but I think we all can be great leaders. It's about listening. It's about compromising. It's about moving forward in a collective and cohesive manner. Thank you.
I will start by saying that the leader I want to speak about is my current supervisor. She's the Vice President of the company that I work um for. She is a woman. Um she has started her own business as a young woman. She is an inspiration. She leads with kindness. She is always willing to learn new ways of doing things, and she has the growth mindset. I've exposed her to many different types of ideas, and I love her for that. And she's likewise exposed me to many different ideas. We are always evolving as humans. We're always evolving as people, and we do not want our community to be preserved in amber. We cannot grow because everything around us changes all the time. So I seek leaders and as and admire leaders that are going to grow along with the changes that is happening everywhere. I am a climate practitioner um and a leader in environmental issues. Um when elected, if elected, I would be the first Latina to serve on the council, first Latina. Okay? The the region is majority Hispanic and Latino. Think about that. That is kind of a tragedy that we don't have that representation. Um I'm a mom. I am pro-renter, and I'm also very much pro-housing, very much pro-housing. Um I am pro-union. I think it's very important that we support union workers. And I leave you with the thought that I hope we can all dream together and imagine what we can create for our children and grandchildren. Whether or not you believe and agree in all the philosophical ideas, we can create better things.
Since this is the closing statement, my favorite leader is Lucille Ball. Yes, everyone knows her for being funny, but not a lot of people know that she was the first woman to ever run a studio. And a lot of men worked for her, and they all said that she ran with an iron fist. She got things done. She made bold moves. She put things on TV that no one had seen before. And that was all done by the first person that you all laugh at, because we all know her as someone funny, but we don't know the business genius behind all of that. I think it's important to relate that to the city, making bold moves, being the first. I was the first Latina to run. I plan on being the first Latina to win, and I'm gonna be the best Latina up here. Stop clapping. This city is for everyone, so I want to continue to make sure the city is for everyone. I want to make sure the city is thriving. I want to make sure that you are all taken care of. I am up here taking on all of your frustrations. We probably share a lot of the same frustrations. This is a volunteer position. I am volunteering to take on your frustrations. This is so important to me. I want to give back to the city. I love this place, and I want to make sure that you all love it, too. I wrote down a few things. Hold on. Um at work, I lead the props department at Knott's Berry Farm. I lead a crew of twenty people, and it's also my responsibility to talk to a lot of different heads of departments. It's my responsibility to talk to designers, directors, every other crew, get feedback from the actors as well sometimes. I have to balance all of those opinions and come up with a final product that everyone can agree on. I feel like that's something I can do here on council. I have a creative background. I am a creative problem solver, and that is what I am here to do for you. Thank you.
I really appreciate the time, Leadership Culver City, and I really appreciate um all of you for taking the time out of your day to be here. Um uh it's not lost on me that uh we're in a very tiny sliver of human history where an LGBT person can even have a chance um of representing um their city. And um I'm looking out in the crowd and I see um some friends uh who have, you know, fought and advocated for my right to to even um exist and be who I am. And and I'm looking out at um a council member who who broke barriers and and um did the same thing. And I'm, you know, I'm really uh inspired by by the leaders who came before me that would allow, you know, that worked tirelessly to make sure, you know, that my husband and I could get married and and have a life together. And um so one of the, just to answer the question, you know, one of the um the the leaders that I've uh that's inspired me is Harvey Milk, who, you know, was on the Board of Supervisors, um was elected to the Board of Supervisors. After after losing two elections before that, losing, losing, and then he was elected in nineteen seventy-seven, he he served for about a year um before his life was taken by a colleague of his who disagreed um with his desire to to make sure housing was accessible to everyone and that no one could discriminate against uh someone for their sexual orientation uh for to get them housing. Um and, you know, he was known as a coalition builder, um multiracial coalitions, coalitions with women, unions, business owners. And um he's someone that that I continue to to go back to. Um a a council member gave me his book, and it's inspired me. And I want to, I just want to uh share that, you know, um like others have shared, um this is about listening, and it is about talking and having difficult conversations. And, you know, I'm the only renter running. I'm the only LGBTQ person running, and I'd be only the second uh ever elected in the city's history. I I'd be the youngest person on the council, and I'm here to listen to you as well and talk to you. So please do. Thank you so much.
I wanted to just tell you a little bit about myself, um because I don't think I got I used the opportunity. Um I am a community advocate. I'm a public schools volunteer. I am a fourth generation union member. Go Sagaftra! Um where I sit on two committees, by the way. One is the Women's Committee, where we work on issues that affect women um and women and arts workers throughout the state of California and nationally. And then I also serve on the Government and Affairs Accountability Committee, where we work on connecting the government with arts workers. Uh because, again, we have so many arts workers in California. Um I'm also a Cultural Affairs Commission. For eight years, I've served in that commission very proudly. And I am a small business owner, and I do all this as a full-time working mom. So all the moms in the crowd here, I know that you know, if you're asked to do one more thing, you know you can do ten more. So I am ready to serve um as your next council member. Um when I moved to Culver City, I was a renter. I became a full-time homeowner, and I am grateful for Culver City for providing a beautiful, safe place to raise my family so uh they could make lifelong friends and start their lives. Um we have a vibrant community, and this is why it is the place to be. Uh together, we're facing tough issues, and I know that we can do them together. And as your council member, I will do what I've always done, which is listen. Um my background is that I do have an MBA in marketing and a bachelor's in advertising, so naturally I became a theater producer. Uh so uh everyone go see a play. Um I did write down a couple of things about what leadership is to me, and uh I put it on my phone and, of course, my cat picture because I'm like, okay. Um communication skills, integrity and ethics, empathy and emotional intelligence, decisiveness, problem-solving, adaptability, resilience, inspiration, motivation, collaboration, team-building, accountability, responsibility, continuous learning, and humility and self-awareness.
Okay, so did you learn about these six candidates? All right. So before we break out to the courtyard uh to meet up with these candidates, uh our team is just, we have so much gratitude for what has occurred here today. Uh I think we made some good progress tonight. And you, the audience, we appreciate you being here. You guys actually showed up, and and this is just an amazing turnout. And Wyatt, why don't you take us home?
Big round of applause for all of our candidates. Big round of applause for you, our neighbors, our audience. You are a fantastic audience. Good night.